Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. We'll start out with a prayer, then the pledge. Heavenly Father, come to you tonight. First of all, pray for the Ray Yoder family and on the lost of his life. We pray for him. We thankful for the 20 years service he put in the village. And quite few of those was just achieved, and we're thankful for them. Be with that family. Lord, we pray for the employees over the weekend that work hard to get our streets clean. Everybody involved. I appreciate the dedication. Lord, I pray for the council tonight. Decisions have to be made. Give us always, and all these things I pray. Amen. Okay, my pledge. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor?
Yes?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Who passed away?
Ray Yoder.
Oh, okay, yes, okay.
Yep, I'm sorry. Link of viewings tonight, funeral tomorrow. Thanks to Dawn for filling in for Cheryl tonight. I want to welcome everybody, and we'll start out with a roll call.
Bassett?
Here.
Klepper?
Here.
Ridgeway?
Here.
Burr?
Yep.
Beverly?
Here.
And Juan, we're missing.
Yeah, he just texted me and said he's not gonna be able to make it tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, you have before you the approval of the January 18th regular council meeting minutes for your approval.
I make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
abstain.
Klepper?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Okay, you have before you the bills. Any questions?
I have a couple, Mayor.
Okay.
First page, one about the 77 Fire Safety Services, 72, 27, and 137, 312. Bring to a total of 144,450 and 49 cents. What is that for?
I don't like her Archie song tonight.
I don't see him.
Isn't that, isn't that all the grant money they got for all the life packs and everything?
Yes.
I didn't, I didn't want to speak for Cheryl, but my guess is she probably had to run that grant through our books.
Okay, so that's, that's what it was, but I, I wasn't, I didn't think we did that anymore. I didn't think we ran grant money through our books anymore.
And she has to account for it somewhere along the line. I double check whether to make sure I'm assuming.
Okay, and this question, it probably doesn't fit in here, but it's monies, and we're talking about monies, so I don't know where else to put it in the questionings tonight. We took up a big collection, and there was a GoFundMe page out there for signs around the village. We did put the one out at Forward Tower that did get erected. But there was a large amount of money still left. Does anybody know where that's at? Or who's, who's responsible for it? Or, I mean, the money was, the GoFundMe page was collected in, in the name of the village. But I know the village never handled it.
Ron, I can speak to that a little bit. The village matched the funds that were spent. And there is $1,200 left in the money that was raised from the public that is still sitting in a, in a holding account. That is actually, that's actually in my name.
Oh, okay, okay.
Good question, Ron.
That's, uh, but there, after everything was paid, that, I was, that was 33,000 and some odd dollars for the one at Forward Tower. And then there's 1,200 left that we can look to build on and up another sign someplace. Is that right, Taylor, or is that money earmarked for someplace already?
So that's money that was raised for the public, I guess, by the public, so it's not necessarily village dollars, but yeah, the plan is for that to sit until we're ready for another sign somewhere.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you very much, Taylor.
Yep.
Um, Mayor, that's all I have. If, if nobody else has anything.
Okay, you got a first, you got a second. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Okay.
This is for Dawn, and then maybe Taylor after that. The postage for returns. Dawn, is that something with utility bills, or?
That's, right now, I think that's a tax one.
It's all tax. It's a lot of, that's a lot of postage for return.
We do have zoning in there from letters that they sent for the address numbers, and there are some water sewer in there also.
Yeah.
The forwards usually.
Is that usually around that mark every time we send, you know, tax bills out? Or tax.
I don't know what it normally is when we send the tax bills out. I'd have to check on that.
All right.
Okay, and you later about the signage. I know the scouts have put up a new sign there on 49 and 2. And then they're also talking about a welcome to Hicksville sign, and it's not to fruition, but coming in on 18 from defiance. I know they've spoken with Stowit Industry and also the school to maybe do one sign that would do like a new school inference and also welcome to Hicksville sign. So maybe that's something we can look into off of 18 there by Stowit Industry. So I'll talk to you later about that.
And Mike, that is, when I look at the bills, she has that listed for return, so I'm going to say that 86572 that you're looking at is the tax ones that she just sent out. She sends one to each resident that needs to file in the village.
All right, thanks.
Uh huh.
Okay, any other questions?
I'll second the bills.
Okay, roll call.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Burr?
abstain.
Juan, or Klepper?
Yeah.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Okay, morgues and commissions, no report unless somebody's, needs to bring something up on that. Okay, council committee reports, personnel committee met January 25th. Eric, you want to report on that?
Oh yeah, we met, just kind of discussed Congress approved Families First Coronavirus Response Act extension. We want to know what our options were on moving forward for 2021, and we discussed a lot of different options for employers' paid leave requirements. Time off for if you contract coronavirus, or if you're home for quarantine. And there's a lot of different, through the government, they have six qualifying reasons for leave. And we looked at all the different options, and the village had to make a choice on how we're gonna act on that, and after a lot of discussion, we voted unanimously to agree if the employee tests positive for COVID-19, or was mandatory quarantine for the Board of Health, the employee with proper documentation approved a letter from the Board of Health stating the dates. The employee would get paid for his or her time off for guidelines set forth with Families First Coronavirus Response Act. If the employee self-quarantined just because of concerns, or thinks he might have been around, or he or she might have been around somebody, but not officially off because of the Board of Health, he or she would need to use existing paid time off, vacation time, or sick leave. And so we all unanimously approved that, and Cheryl was in agreeance with that too, so.
I'm guessing we need a, a motion, Troy, on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you, can you make that motion then, Mary?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Hey, quick, quick question.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've, I've got a quick question. Just looking at those six reasons. Did you guys decide on if there's a child being cared for? What's that, what that clarified as?
Yeah, that's one of the six reasons, and you fall into a bracket on if you're off for, let's say, 14 days for a child. I don't have that paperwork in front of me directly, but it dealt with, if you're off, because I dealt with this with my own kid, if I was gonna be off to school for two weeks for, for quarantine because he tested positive or is in quarantine. I know for sure if he's, if he's in quarantine and I had to be at home with them, I don't, you get two thirds your salary. Up to so much per day, up to so much per week for up to 80 hours.
Okay, okay, any other discussion?
I said, did everybody get that attachment she had with the minutes? For it's got all the qualifying events and things?
The sheets, is what you're talking about, Ken?
The Families First Coronavirus Response Act.
They have that highlighted on here.
It's page seven and page eight of the scanned documents.
So Eric, what you're saying, if I have an employee that takes off because the child is either has been exposed or has COVID, they want to get two thirds of their salary, but if they want their full salary, they would have to take their sick leave?
That is correct. That's exactly what I asked at the school too. If my kid was in quarantine for 14 days, and I said, if I wanted my full salary, I can take sick time, sick time, right? And they said, that is correct.
Okay.
Well, we're pretty much just following the same guidelines as the government's doing. We weren't making any of our own or changing any of the rules for certain individuals, or just kind of keeping it cut and dry, so it's all out there for everyone to follow the same rules.
Okay, any other discussion, questions? I think, Eric, you made the motion. I'll entertain a second.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call.
Klepper? Beverly?
What happened to Klepper?
He gave me a thumbs up.
Okay, Ron. Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Police Fire EMS meeting, November 20, no. That must be January 28th?
Yeah, apparently I typed wrong.
I see that. Okay, I just read it.
Me too, now, Ron.
Report on that, Larry?
Back in November. Um, yeah, somebody had a question about the light bar missing on the police cruiser, and Police Chief informed us that he took it off, and I didn't put it in there. The car's still legal, but you're not allowed for traffic stops, correct, chief? I can't hear you.
Right, it's not used, for the purpose of just running traffic for traffic offenses, you can't just use it for the purpose of running traffic offenses. You can still stop cars, but it's not for the laws, it's not, you're not deliberately or purposely outrunning traffic for traffic offenses. So.
I'm curious to, what's the purpose of that?
Of purpose of taking the bar off?
Yeah.
Because the lights, there was lights, several lights that were not working.
Oh, okay.
And it's an outdated light bar that you can't get parts for.
So it's just out in the shop there somewhere?
Yeah, and actually got taken to the dumpster.
Oh, okay.
Corey won, actually, threw it to the dumpsters Saturday, I think it was. So he had dumpster, he could put it in, so.
You said you might have hands for another one, right, chief?
Yes, or, yes, may have another one that's gonna be hopefully donated to us.
And then they're having issues with the converter on Explorer, and do you have any luck then with Auburn on that, chief?
Yes, and because it's a manifold, they can't custom fit it. Those units are one unit, and he says there's no way to customize it. So the difference in price was a hundred and some, a hundred and a little over a hundred dollars was the difference in price. He said he called around, he can't. That's the closest he could come to beating it, so I think ours. Uh, ours is $1,557, and I think some odd cents for Rosebrock's. Get bent was 1,450 or 60 some dollars. That's what he told me on the phone today. And so, Rosebrock, it, it, it's running fine, just to check engine lights on, and that's what, they keep resetting it, and that's what he's telling us. It's probably the catalytic converter, and he said we could drive it until it starts acting sluggish and then replace it. You know, so I said, we can drive it until it starts acting sluggish, maybe it'll get us through, maybe it won't. Because we already put $4,000 into it.
Yes.
To fix that transmission, that was just a year ago. I hate the man, I hate not to fix it either, you know, so.
Well, me personally, I like seeing it fixed.
So. But, so that's where we're at with that.
Myself personally, I would say just keep driving it. Take some electrical tape and put over that check engine light. That way it won't glare at you at night, and keep driving it. So. Or anything, sort of slow the vehicle down.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's been, it's still running fine.
That one, that one and the Taurus of both, I, I wouldn't do anything with them. A couple of new cars coming, right?
Yes. So that's, you know, I'll bring that up when my turn to talk.
Okay.
But, no, I mean, the Taurus, I want gone. I mean, that car is nothing but problems.
Yep.
So. But, so that's where we're at with that.
Okay, go ahead, Larry.
Okay, and the generator's online. I'd love to talk about that stuff. But anyway, wish Scott Kramer was on here because he had questions about extending the area for the fighter fighters, since they're having issues recruiting firefighters. And I don't know, did he talk to you, Troy, about anything?
He only mentioned to me that he'd gotten, not about the extending the area, it was more about the getting contacted by the township over in Indiana about providing service. And I told him I had to look into one thing. The one, the one issue that I know off the top of my head is gonna be an issue is not necessarily on the fire end, but would be on the EMS end due to there being different requirements for paramedics, EMTs, and things of that nature. We may have some issues providing service. I'm still looking into that, but he didn't talk to me at all about that issue of widening the area.
So what do we do about that, Mayor? Do we vote on that, about extending the area for firefighters, or?
Well, we can talk about it. If you want to get it moving, now I'd say so. What is it now, three mile?
I, I think that's what he said, yes.
Yeah, so. And I agree, you know, EMTs might be a problem, but you guys, like, how far does he want to extend it?
Uh, where to stop now, Eric? You remember, was it Hoover Road?
Yeah, and he said he had one or two people interested, possibly one mile out from that.
Yeah, I thought he said something about Aerosmith Road or something. Uh, I wish he was online and then he could, you know.
Well, maybe we all, until the next meeting, when asking.
I think that'd be good.
Yeah.
I agree.
Okay.
And that's really all I have, except, you know, the same old stuff with the mark radios, right, Mark? All right, thanks.
Larry, I have a question for you. You stated, John L., you, you, I guess Mike Barth had talked to Kramer about transporting patients to other facilities, and wanted to know how it was going. And I've really no answer here for us. How is it going?
Uh, they're still working with the hospital on the billing part, Ron. And John was talking to the hospital about how they're gonna handle it.
So they have not done any transports yet?
Yes, they have done transports.
Oh, they have?
Yes.
But we just don't know how to bill them?
Well, I think the insurance is paying for it now, but they want to avoid that and just have the hospital take care of the insurance and the hospital pay us.
Yeah.
I think he's working on a contract kind of with, with Powers at the hospital. Get with them, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Larry? Any comments? Okay. Um, administrators report, Ken?
No, nothing really, other than, I look ahead to Troy's part. That one question I had on the bills, that 137,000, that's running through her books. So you'll be voting on that later. Otherwise, our new MPDES permit came out at 4:30 this afternoon. That 76 pages I already read through, yeah. Got any major changes I'll pass it along. As long as the people have questions, I'll try to answer them.
Any questions?
I want to thank you.
On. Go ahead, Mayor.
Oh, I was just thinking, Ken and his crew out there, they put a lot of time in. Snow removal and getting around town. It looked really good from the amount of snow we had, so. I know they stay on top of all that when it hits. But I don't think we had any real accidents or anything, which is a good thing.
Yeah, good job.
I've got a question in regards to snow, snow removal uptown. With the village being responsible for sidewalks outside of the four feet away from buildings, is the snow removal technically the village's responsibility beyond that, or is it the building owner?
The 20 years I've been around, it's always been the building owner. I don't know how that ever got staff or anything like that. So I don't know if any of the old timers can explain that or not.
Well, I've been here 67 years, and it's always been the, the property owner.
I've been uptown for 30, and we've always took care of the front of our place, you know, it's just, I guess, courtesy, and I know the guys kind of, you know, having them get out and shovel and doing different things, it'd be tough, a lot, a lot more work on their part. But getting it to the curb and the road for them has helped them out immensely.
Well, and that's why I was curious, you know, I've, I've been doing a lot of work in Coldwater, Michigan, and the reason I bring that up is they, like, Coldwater, Michigan has a they have a Kubota that they actually go through, so when they're plowing, they push sidewalks all into the, into the street, and then they plow through. So then, then you'd have, wouldn't have a timing issue. I was just curious if that's ever been brought up. Whether it's an attachment for the Bobcat that we've got, or a plow in the front of the beautification committee gator, or something like that. Mike Eze, I, I think it would look better for the village if all the sidewalks were all cleaned at the same time, and you don't have hit or miss. Just a, just a thought.
Well, one, one thing with that is, if you walk our sidewalks, you're, I see some water valve boxes sticking up. I could see those getting clipped real easy. As far as the timing, if, if you're gonna need a body to do it, I mean, that's what that's gonna boil down to. Not saying it can't be done, but then you'll still have, if the staff owners then do their four feet two days after we do the downtown, we gotta go back and do that. This time worked real well. It's the first we had 50, 60% of them come out there. Snowstorms, that's why we got stuck down. Still have to kind of cooperate too, even if the village took over sidewalks. I'm not supposed to, but I'm also not gonna be around this upcoming winter anyway. Uh, but you'd get need to have a dedicated body to do that. That's something you guys can think about.
Any other thoughts on that? Leave as is? Is that kind of consensus?
Yeah, leave as is.
Too much stuff up there with the, where the power boxes come up, and the, and the water boxes are sticking up too high, and there's too much stuff to tear up up there.
Well, if you can feel it, well, I'm just saying, like, I'll just use Taylor for an example. If you went up to get started, you know, get that DOD on the way to the zone. Village employees in advance would know, okay, there's one here, one, you know, they could lock down for that stuff. We've had a problem in the past for some people were doing sidewalks, or somebody was paying them to do it, and they'd just go flying along, and they hit stuff because they didn't know it was in there. So it could be done, but you'd want somebody that knows what they're doing. And you need the right piece of equipment. I think a skid steer would be too big. I don't know if the beautification gator would have enough oomph, you have to move fixed that. It could be done, I said, you guys can think about it, and see what you want to do long term.
Well, back in, when Jordan was here, a couple, we had a couple good snowstorms. And the people had taken and piled the snow out by the curb, or shoved it into the street, into the water flow line. And Jordan had hired me to go up there, we went up like at midnight one night, and cleaned up all the piles, pushed them out into the street, and then cleaned street. Myself on the skid loader and, and the village employees doing their thing on the street. That was before the village had their own skid loader. And, and that worked great, except it's, it's like, and I know this to be God's honest truth, because I've been plowing snow since I was a little kid. Soon as we would get a section of street sidewalk cleaned off, then, and I heard somebody on here say it, then, then a store owner or somebody would come, and he cleaned his little piece off that we hadn't got to yet, but the street was, had been pushed up to us. Now we gotta back up and redo it and start cleaning again, because somebody people won't work with you when you plow in snow.
Well, yeah, I understand that. The, I guess that's the point, would be if the village would under, if the village would take over the, the snow removal of the sidewalks up there. Then it would all be done at the same time.
I would say lack of employees and not putting extra money on the village, and some, some storefront owners, they clean theirs, and they're good at it, some never touch them, and some sold them real well all the time, and some do nothing with them whatsoever.
Correct, and you know, it's, for example, the, two days, the Saturday, there was a couple areas where there was two foot of snow all the way across from storefront to street. So when you've got that scenario, I mean, that's the village's sidewalk for the majority of that. So who's responsible for that?
To me, it's the store owners.
But it's not, though. It's the village's sidewalk. Right?
Why hasn't this happened uptown, Taylor? I mean, I've been uptown 30 years here. I've had people go through with a tractor and a blade and, and plow a little bit, just make a path to walk down the sidewalk. And their tire tracks would pack the snow down and ice up, and then it would push, you know, snow off to the right or left or whatever. It actually kind of made it harder, so. You know, if they had a snow thrower, was blowing it into the street when there was no cars parked out there, I think that would, before the city got through there. I mean, we've had kind of, we've had some people clean up downtown and, and run a path kind of thing, so people needed to walk through that area, they could get through, but but it would, they would definitely need to throw the snow closer to the curb or into the, the street. We just got, to me, I mean, people just kind of stepped up and did what they could. Not every business is, is occupied, and you know, they don't get done, flat out, they just don't get done. But I could see maybe throwing a, a path or two out to the curb, but not creating more of an embankment or anything. But not creating more of a, an embankment or anything like that on curbing and then the business owners, that would help them. Not have to shovel so much to the curb, if that makes sense.
It's very time consuming up there too, a lot of stuff to go around.
Has anybody complained from the store owners about this?
No, I, it's more just a, I've not heard any complaints and frankly, it's not, the, the only reason I'm bringing it up is because, you know, I am a store owner now. Um, I don't have a problem shoveling, it was more I was up, I've never really been up there at five thirty in the morning after a snowstorm to see what it looks like, to be honest. So it was just more of a question.
Yeah, because I think for the most part, I think all the store owner owners do pretty well. I agree with you, Larry.
Good point, Taylor. Um, any other discussion on that? I think we're gonna leave it as is unless somebody comes up with a good idea. It's something to think about. Yes. Okay, any other questions for Ken? Okay, solicitors report.
Okay, first thing I had was ordinance twenty twenty one dash zero three. An ordinance to amend the annual appropriations ordinance and declaring an emergency. Uh, and I think Ken had the, he mentioned the justification for that. Um, I think that's running, is that Ken, that's running the grant money through our books?
I'm ninety nine point nine percent sure that's what it is.
Okay, okay, okay. So we just need to make that change so that we can, uh, get, get the books right.
I'm always suspending rules.
Second. I'll second.
Rule call.
Basset?
Yes.
Clepper?
Yeah.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Bar?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
The second and third readings of ordinance two thousand twenty one dash zero three. By caption only, an ordinance to amend the annual appropriations ordinance and declaring an emergency.
It's a move.
Second.
I'll second if Mike got first.
Okay. Beverly?
Yes.
Bar?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Clepper?
Yes.
Basset?
Yes.
The next thing I have is resolution twenty twenty one dash zero one. First reading by caption only, a resolution for the village of Hicksville, Ohio to approve a new bond schedule for mayor's court. Um, basically what this is, um, the, the bond schedule they use as far as people that get speeding tickets and other traffic citations and whatnot. Where they can just pay the amount and avoid going to court is in the past been based on the schedule out of the defiance municipal court. And in December, I think it was, the municipal court put out a new bond schedule, which changed some of the amounts. And also changed some of the things that you could post bond on, um, and whatnot, so. Um, in discussions with, with Mark, um, and with Julie or whatever, we went ahead and. Did the legislation to modify our bond schedule, so it's the same as the municipal court bond schedule. Um, and again, that's only for people that post bond, the people that show up, the mayor can find them, whatever he wants within the, within the realm. It's not really an emergency, but if somebody wanted to suspend the rules to move it along. I don't know that there's any, anything controversial or anything in there.
Let's move it along, let's suspend the rules. Second.
Who seconded, I'm sorry.
I'll second.
Taylor, I think.
All right. Basset?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Clepper? Clepper? Bar?
Yes.
So then second, third readings of resolution two thousand twenty one dash zero one by caption only. A resolution for the village of Hicksville, Ohio to approve a new bond schedule for mayor's court.
It's a move.
Second. Rule call.
I didn't hear, bar, okay.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bar?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Clepper?
Yes.
Basset?
Yes.
Then the, the only other thing that I had, just so people are having their mind what's going on, the mayor mentioned to me, uh, remember if it was a phone call or an email. About what the process would be when we get to the point that, uh, the, the land we purchased for the. New well field or whatever, when we get to the point if we want to sell that. Um, and I did the research on it, looked it up, the basic research, and just so everybody knows, when we get to that time. We'd have to pass a, uh, resolution. Uh, which would have to be passed by at least two thirds of the members of council or an ordinance. Um, basically that the real estate's not necessary for village purposes and authorizing the sale of the real estate. And then what would happen is we got to advertise in the paper once a week for five consecutive weeks. And then it has to be sold to the highest bidder. So we're gonna have to do an auction, advertise it for five weeks, once a week for five weeks. And do a public auction and sell it to the highest bidder.
Troy, can we reserve the right to refuse?
We might be able to put a reserve on as far as the price, but not refuse who the buyer is.
No, no, just re, to, to refuse any and all bids, if we're not happy with the bid.
Right. Okay, what you would avoid is, you know, if there's somebody that's interested in buying it and you're like, oh no. I know that guy, he's a troublemaker, he's gonna, you know, so we're not gonna sell it to you type of thing. I mean, that would be the concern with that. As opposed to if you say in advance, hey, we're not gonna sell it for less than whatever, four hundred thousand dollars or whatever. Um, you could do that for sure, just like any auction, but I think. You have a tough time seeing where the bids come in and it's a good price for it, and you say, nah, we don't want to sell it to him.
No, I understand, I understand that part, um. Well, I, I, I'm addressing full counsel now and I think that, that we, we should do something. Um, most contractors, uh, they, they don't, uh, go looking for. Housing additions like that in the middle of the summer. This is their downtime, this is when they're looking. And we shouldn't, I mean. Ever since the day that we started talking about buying that property, we were all kind of in agreeance that, that we were gonna sell that housing section of it. Am I right, or did I fall asleep? Think I'm right? Yeah, you're right. And we'll have to advertise for five weeks. I think my recommendation, that was one of my goals, get that thing moving. Yeah.
The other thing you need to make sure that beforehand, and I'll have to get with Ken on it or whatever, but. I know we got different surveys or whatever, but make sure we got a good description and everything for what we're gonna sell, because that's gotta go into the advertising. Um. Gotta figure out, you know, if we're gonna auction it, who's gonna do that, all those things.
Um, so you can bring back the resolution next meeting, Troy, to get it started?
Yep.
Okay, then in five weeks so that we can work out the details during that time, right?
Yeah, I mean, we'll have to be running the ad that we're gonna sell it and when, when the sale's gonna be, I mean, that's the advertising portion of it. But as far as, you know, I mean, we should have for the advertisement. And for the availability of anybody that may be interested. Proper legal descriptions, documentation, survey maps, whatever they may want to see. It seems counterproductive if we don't have those in place and somebody's really interested and we say, well, we're still working on getting that stuff around.
We gotta advertise that as residential or commercial or?
Just have to advertise it's for sale.
Another question. Did we ever decide what we were gonna do as far as drainage? So if we're gonna require that, um, drainage be maintained, do we have to get an easement put in place or an extended easement?
So what we would have to do as part of the, part of the sale and the contracts say, that as part of the sale. We're reserving an easement and we would need a description of where that easement area was gonna be. That's why I say those details have to be worked out before we can run off and auction it. We can't give ourselves an easement right now, because you can't really give yourself when you own the whole thing, an easement legally. So what we would have to do is include in the language that, as part of the sale, a condition of the sale, that we're gonna reserve an easement. For our use for drainage purposes and here's a description of the easement area.
Okay, that makes sense.
That's a, that's another thing that, uh, we as a group, we dropped the ball, I talked to Mike Bailey the other day. Uh, to see how everything went since we had a December sixth deadline on everybody getting off of that property out there and back onto their own. Behavior, row people back onto their own property and we dropped the ball because we haven't done a follow up on it. Uh, I went out and, and, uh, but I was too lazy to, uh, walk it. I, I was afraid to drive it in my two wheel drive pickup truck, but, uh. I think there's two or three people that got off our property, the rest probably set fire to our letter. Uh, that has to be done before we can sell. Something has to be finished, permanent done, either give them the property or make them can, uh, comply with their letter. Something has to happen there before we can sell. We can't sell that all messed up like that. Okay, any other thoughts? But I, I think everybody agrees, we need to move on it, not wait. Everybody agreements now? I can see everybody's head shaking, yes. Okay. Any other questions for Troy? Okay, Troy, I've got a question, you say advertise.
Yep.
Where do you advertise?
And, uh, you can, I mean, it's once a week, so we could advertise in the Tribune or you could advertise, I mean, you could advertise as much as you want. I mean, if you wanna get the most people, I would think you would want to advertise some, you know, maybe multiple places or whatever, just. To satisfy the statute, it just, it has to be in a paper of general circulation, um, within the municipality. So the Tribune is good to satisfy the law, advertising there.
You don't want to just satisfy the law, we want to sell it.
Right, that's what I'm saying is.
Fort Lang, Lima, Columbus, you know, those kind of papers.
Or I don't know if there's any trade paper, I mean, you still need to do it in one locally, because that's what the law says.
Yeah, that's right.
If there's, I don't know if there's trade papers or something for builders or, or something like that. That might be worth it.
Let me ask you this. Okay. Troy, when, when I was, uh, still in the office business, um, if we were putting together a consignment auction, maybe a, maybe a guy in, in Cleveland wanted us to sell. And he only had a few pieces, we would send out, uh, some feeler cards. Uh, announcing that we were having a consignment auction on such and such a date. If, see if anybody was interested in, in signing. Uh, know whether or not we were gonna have, you know, we, we couldn't just have a, a big auction for ten pieces, we had to, you know, we had to get in more. Can we do that? Can we, can we send out anything that would, that, uh, to see if we had any interest? I know it's, it's added cost.
It's added cost, there's nothing that says you can or, or, you know, send out, send out letters to. Every, every builder in eight counties or, you know, or whatever that might be interested, I mean, you can do more than the statute requires, you just can't do less.
Yeah, okay, but that would be advantageous to, to us as a community, uh, to, to sell it. Uh, you know, if, if we sent out, uh, twenty, thirty letters to twenty, thirty prominent builders, uh, within a hundred miles of us here. Uh, or more, uh, and got nothing back. I would say it would be kind of fruitless to go ahead and go, we're gonna have an auction. As of right now, I've got three builders interested verbally, which is a start, but I agree. They just want a few choice lots. Um, now who would, would that be Ken's job to get the letters out or whose job is that?
I, I don't know that that falls under anybody's, uh, job description, but, I mean, whoever. Whoever you guys elect that you want to do that and want the letter to. Like you said, it doesn't really need to be anything more than informational, you know, once we schedule the auction to say, you know. We're, you know, this piece of land, maybe some informational materials with it, a copy of the survey. And the description or something like that and.
Okay. Johnny Vonnell, cheers.
Don't volunteer me, because I'm confused. If you're gonna send out all these notices and that, if you don't get in response, what are you gonna do with those fifty four lots, so? Why wouldn't you just, we're hitting everybody, they have the option.
Do that again, Ken?
Well, if you're gonna send out the, the promotional materials first and you don't get that from anybody, you're not gonna do the auction?
I wouldn't.
Well, then what are you gonna do with those fifty four lots?
Well, we'll wait and, we'll wait for another six months or a year and try it again.
Okay.
There's a bit of uncracked.
I think that's what I'm now, so Troy hears it versus me emailing. Uh, you never got a survey of those fifty four lots.
Okay.
He was just the fifty four lot saying parcel E O six, you know, this, that, that, that.
They are, they, they are separate lots though, I mean, they're like lot number one, lot number two, lot number three, right?
Uh, yeah, they've all got their own parcel numbers, so we could print off from the on that was changed.
Yeah, and just print a copy, just print a copy of the subdivision like survey with the lots and. You can say parcel number, you know, whatever and.
Um.
There, yeah, they're already surveyed off, that'll be, and the key will be. In my, you're, you're selling all of them, you're not piecemealing a couple here and a couple there and, I mean, you can't do that. I mean, if they want to make the deal, you know, if some, if some builders like, hey, I'm gonna buy them all, but, you know, Joe Smith wants to build a house over here and I already know it and. I'll agree to you, I'll sell you that one for X amount of money, that's their business.
Exactly.
After the fact. We'll, we'll transfer them to one group, one person, one entity, whatever, and then what they do with them after them, that's their business.
Okay. I think everybody, so Troy, next, we'll bring him back to next council.
Yep.
Well, something else you gotta think about, the, the easement. What are you gonna do with it?
I think he, Water Shield Committee. I think we need to get with, uh, Mike Bailey yourself and then the Water Shield Committee, go out and take a look at, uh, who's complied and who hasn't and. You know, we.
The parent had something else in mind for a different easement on the properties we own, not that existing easement. That's what you have to be figured out before you do anything, which means it's certainly in a legal description, which is gonna take some time. But before you start.
I agree, we need to.
Figure out what you want, I think if you sell the lots the way they are. You could probably, when you're generally somehow with the new buyer who's responsible for drainage, you maybe wouldn't have to separate. Property, but again, that's you guys' call, but that's what you're gonna have to have worked out so you can get a surveyor in there to do it. You get a good legal.
A development of, a development of that size is gonna have to get an NOI. Um, so it's gonna have to go through the, you're gonna have to go through the entire drainage process and mapping that out before you can submit for an NOI. And EPA won't let you shed new water onto the old lots. So they'll have to either maintain existing drainage pathways or account for it in the new design.
Okay, well, well, I guess people, we're gonna make a new easement. Obviously, I'm buying a lot of, of, if I'm buying all fifty four lots. A lot that's enough to be existing, Haver Drive, gonna have a new easement. Or is that what you were thinking about, Taylor? That's what we would need to get a survey of.
Yeah, we would need to do.
I, I think, I think the, the NOI process would would be enough to ensure that the drainage pathways are maintained. I don't think you need an additional easement. Um, because if you put that additional easement in there, you're not, I mean, for, for what, really? So if you're not they'll have to, they'll have to accommodate drainage plans with the new development, so plotting a new easement, or plotting a new easement rather, I don't, I, I, I don't know that that's gonna be necessary.
But Taylor, don't you agree that, that while we are in command of that property, well, uh, that real estate, that we need to put that swale in, back in where it was forty years ago? And, and one of the reasons that, I mean, we, we tried everything to get April to allow us to do it. Uh, and, and soon as we became the owners of the property, we kinda decided we weren't gonna do it. But we're still making people get off the property, which we've done anyway, but uh if, if we go ahead and put an easement in there, then when they get their permit to disrupt that much acreage at one time, they have to allow that as, as an existing. It can't be considered as new, it has to be considered existing because it, it was there when they bought it. So that's why we should do something with it before we try to sell it.
But we're trying to sell it in like five weeks, right?
Well, no, what I'm saying is the easement's already there. You just need to get it cleaned up. Which is fine, cuz like we said, if they didn't do it, you know, the village would go in and charge them. But you're just gonna have to get that process done. And good luck moving that cooler and then back to one end, that person's got driveway approach.
Is that, is that what we do if somebody, is that what you would do at your house, Kent? If somebody encroached on you, set a garage beside of you, and you come out and said, hey, really appreciate if you'd take and, and move that garage six foot off of my, out of my yard, and he just tells you, yeah, I ain't gonna do it. What would you do?
It's gonna be a chore tearing out that driveway approach. It's not gonna be a hundred dollars to move oil shed. Like this is gonna be some major bucks. You probably will catch some flak.
Well, that's, that's why we, we need to do more than just that one letter we sent giving them a December sixth deadline. We need to to possibly let our attorney do it instead of our zoning guy and let him send some letters that says, hey, we, we've got some teeth in this thing. You better get her done by such a date, or we're coming and it's gonna cost you big bucks.
Yeah, that's up to you guys. I mean, we have an enforceable thing in there. Why not afford to do it?
I think we oughta wait and talk about this some more before we just make any decisions.
Right, I don't wanna make any decision tonight, but I wanna talk about it tonight so we've all got time to, to uh uh chew on it a little bit and digest it.
I hate to use land that we wanna sell, that would lessen the cost of the price, I think. But the swell right now is on Haver Drive, right, on that property line?
Yes, but they also right in the middle of that swell. Those big green boxes exactly in the middle of that existing swell.
Okay, but that's on the Haver Drive side. Even though they approached.
Yeah.
Ron, Ron, the the electric boxes are in the middle of the easement, they're basically right on the property line. Based on the super base, there, there was nothing that was actually, there were actually no encroachments over the property lines, I don't believe, or within the easements. So I, what Ron Beverly's saying is if we're gonna cut a swale, you can't cut a swale through those electric boxes.
Right, they're behind, right now, they're behind.
Correct, so what I, what Ron Beverly's saying is that you're, if, if I understand correctly, you're of the thought process that we should widen that easement and cut a swale on the other side of the, so the, the LeBarre side of the property line. I, is that, am I understanding you correct, Ron?
Well, I, I don't know how you're, how you're gonna do it any other way, or else you're gonna have to go out around each one of those boxes. Right?
Land on this new that we wanna sell. That's my thought.
I'm sorry, Ron, say again.
Okay, I think we shouldn't take an easement for the LeBarre Drive. I don't think we should take any of that land. I think we're gonna get less money. Those lots are only one hundred and twenty-five, and you take another ten feet.
I agree with that, but I don't want, I don't want the back row of Haver Drive to be affected by any new housing development. I want a new housing development, but they've had such issues over the years, the way that land is, and we've asked and they've asked to, to help, you know, fix it. It is our easement through there, I think, I, I believe with, with Ron, we need to do something.
We have the opportunity to fix a forty-plus year old problem, a, and we're, we're, if we don't, we're, we should be sitting in these seats.
Right. I think uh Water and Sewer, we started this, Ron, I think, I think we need to get, get on it, uh go out there and take a look at what has been done up to this point and make some recommendations how we can fix it and, and save some drainage issues. Both for our, our third row residents and then also for the housing development, you know, and hopefully they're gonna work with us and whoever buys it needs to work with us and, and uh creating a good storm drainage out there, so.
So, so one of the thought while we're talking about this is also putting in a subdivision subdivision section in our code that dictates any new roads require curbs, storm drains, all of that.
We have that.
When was that adopted?
Oh, I drew it up fifteen years ago.
Okay, so with that being, with, with that being the case, with that being the case, you, you're only gonna have a hundred and twenty-five feet of drainage going back into that swale instead of the entire field.
That's correct.
That's another thought.
Yes. There'll be a street, there'll be storm sewer, and that's gonna stop all that water coming across the field. That's correct.
Um, here's thinking of that drainage plan. If you go into part eleven of our ordinances, seven, eleven, five, oh nine, eleven, thirteen, there is subdivision regulations, if you want to check into those to see to date whatever you wanna call it, if you wanna review them, but we do have subdivision regulations. It's got design standards, inspired improvements and all of that.
No more open ditches.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that's in there.
Yeah, I, I think it is too.
But you might wanna look at those before you, you know, cuz if you need to change any of that, do it before you sell, so.
Yeah, so Mike Committee's gonna look into it to keep it moving, Water and Sewer Committee?
Yeah, we'll look at the swell back there and uh get with Mike and then uh Kent and uh have a meeting with them and see where we're at.
Uh, Taylor, are you on Water and Sewer?
Yes. Yeah, I believe I still am.
Wonderful.
All right, good discussion.
And, and Mayor? Mayor, I, you, you said you wanted to volunteer uh to put this thing together. I do have seventeen plus years uh experience in the auction business. We sold uh uh millions and millions of dollars worth of, of big iron, some real estate, but mostly big iron. But I know how to put an auction together, and if Taylor would want to uh buddy up with me and help me out, we would do it.
Wonderful.
What do you think, Taylor?
I'll be in touch.
Thanks. Okay, any other questions as we move along? Main thing is we're, we wanna get this sooner than later.
Yes.
Okay, where are we at here? Okay, next on the agenda, police stations.
All right, so, let's see, I wasn't here until last meeting, so so stats for two thousand and twenty, uh our total calls for service was four thousand eight hundred and forty uh compared to two thousand nineteen's, with four thousand nine hundred sixty-seven, so we were down a hundred and twenty-seven. But I thought that was pretty good number as far as because we were idle for about too much, you know, we weren't responding to as much and handling a lot of stuff over the phone uh because of COVID. Uh, so I'd say our numbers were pretty similar for those two years.
Excuse me, you, you say four thousand eight hundred and ninety calls?
Four thousand eight hundred and forty.
Forty calls?
Yep, and then four thousand and nine sixty-seven was for two thousand nineteen. So, uh so uh our new cruisers are in, I received word last week. Uh, they are at statewide Ford, they're scheduled to be built uh the first week of March. So I'm assuming, I'm assuming it'll take at least a week to build them. Uh, so I'm, I'm thinking we'll probably, we'll get with uh Beaches are gonna ladder them for us, they did that twenty-nine. So I'm expecting them to probably be ready to go into March first of April. Uh, we are now certified with the Ohio Collaborative. Uh, that is the state program that, that changed for the state of Ohio law enforcement, uh changing their standards in policing. Uh, that was started under uh Kasich in two thousand fourteen, where police departments, sheriff's offices have become compliant with the, the standards in policing. Uh, so we're now certified with that on the use of force, uh hiring, and then the new executive order, which was safe policing. Uh, so there's a lot more that we'll be doing, and a lot more coming down the pipe that will have to be uh be done. Basically, they're gonna start telling you that you can't. We'll be eligible for grant money if we're not in compliance with the collaborative, so we are in compliance now, so we received our certificates, so we're good with that. Uh, our generator and elec, the electrical box and everything, it's all hooked up. Uh, Corey Warren was out over the weekend, he looked at it and called me, he said what a big difference it was. So anybody wants to stop out and take a look at, they're more than welcome to. Uh, so that's ready to go. And then today, uh I wanna give a shout out, there's um, I'm assuming there were students that was out and about today, shoveling, blowing off sidewalks. That was very nice to see. Uh, I wanna give a shout out to them today, that was out and about today.
Hey Chief, that was actually the, the wrestling team.
Is that who it was?
Yeah.
Okay, so, well, they did, they did a great job, it was very, very nice, very kind, so, so that's all I have.
Your heat and air system back there, Chief, that doing good for him?
Yes, that's working perfect, it's very nice now. Everything's at room temperature where we need it to be, so.
Okay, any other questions for the chief?
No, I got emailed, man.
Okay, fire an EMS. Um, again, I wanna announce about Ray Yoder passing away, twenty years of service in the village. Uh, he was assistant chief last several years. He was also a local business owner, you know, plumber here in town, so he'll be missed. Um, park director, I don't see anybody on from the park. I think they had a meeting last week.
Val, Val's not able to get on her computer, she is having issues. Uh, she wanted to let everyone know that she plans on advertising for lifeguards real soon, and they have some spots to fill, so still, she'll be getting ahold of uh everyone and get something to the newspaper here real, real soon on that.
And my understanding, there's an opening on the park board? Right? Did you know about that, Eric?
Uh, now that I'm aware of, I emailed you and Troy about uh if there's one of the individuals on the park board that's still okay, since now no longer a full-time employee at the school, and uh Troy, you both responded that they're okay, so.
I got um Gary Shaw, um Rick Melton is resigning, so there will be an opening on the park board. I just got that as an email this week, or last week, this is Monday. So there is an opening, if anybody's interested. Okay, anything else on the park? Questions for Eric? Okay. Dawn, your fiscal officer report?
You have her fund status report, um the income tax and the utility collections, and cemetery budget that they sent, and the property tax listing.
Kent? Uh, we're here, where it says East High Street Parking, is that what's behind, I'll, I'll say the Huber, with that section back there, is that what East High Street Parking is?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And also, there's two odd balls. Um, the twenty zero nine acres up towards the top of the sewer plant that we paid the, call it thirteen ninety-nine. Somehow that, that got missed a few years back. I've got that paperwork submitted. You'll notice the Adventure Allen restroom.
Yeah.
Uh, just for future reference, that land is tax exempt. Uh, so we built a new building on tax exempt land, why are we getting charged? Well, there is, it's an imaginary parcel, but you build a building on tax exempt land, that building is not tax exempt until you apply for exemption. So I got all that paperwork submitted too, to get that knocked down, but just paying special assessments. So in the future, say if you built a new conception stand somewhere else on a property, you're gonna have the same issue. You're gonna get billed full property tax until they invent this parcel for you to apply to get exempt. I think it's rather dumb, but the state of Ohio for you. I don't like that, I think caught up as far as being exempt for what it's supposed to be exempt.
Okay. Any other questions for Kent or Dawn?
All those, uh, a couple of years ago, we had a bunch of uh things that, uh, tax assessments that we weren't, we didn't even know what they were. Uh, we had some that, we didn't know what they were, they weren't even on, is all, that's all, you straightened all that stuff out, right, Kent?
I've got deeds for everything that exists. We do get charged a couple places that they have made parcels off our streets. So it might, I mean, I think one of them is on, I'm not really sure on that, so don't hold me to it, because I would check in that we don't own anything, and they said, oh, that's just one parcel that, you know, they pick up in there for streets. And you'll see that library addition on there. That's another one where she literally had it on. The addition was not tax exempt.
Library addition that is, that is zero?
Yeah. But we got charged full property tax for the first year or so till I got the exemption file for something that doesn't exist. So there again, it's it's hard trying to explain to the state that this stuff does not exist, that there's still a parcel for it. But that's all straightened out, so yeah, we're up to speed on everything.
Wonderful, you do nice work, Kent.
You know, oh, one, one last thing, on that Haver Drive sixty acres or whatever, when we build the well field. when we build the well field, the twelve acres of the well field, you can apply to get tax exempt. The rest of that land that is gonna stay is, is regular.
I, I guess that's another question, Kent. Do we know exactly what we bought out there now?
We've got a deed. Putting an number on it.
They do not agree with, with our purchase agreement though, correct?
Hmm, I don't believe so.
And I guess we were all kinda okay with that.
I'm assuming that hurt any more sense.
Does it?
Troy, you looked into that, right?
Yeah, I don't know that there's anything you can do about it. I mean, we got a survey. The actual description is what the description is, and I guess the issue would be the purchase price was based upon, when we figured it was based upon a per acre price. I mean, it would be tough to do anything about it at this point, I guess is what I would say. But what we own is what that description is. How many ever acres that description is? And Ron, you know as well as I do, you go out and find the, you know, wherever they measured them from and take your measuring stuff, you should be able to find everything.
Yep.
Okay, I just wanted, wanted to make sure that, that that was a dead horse. Okay. It's a dead horse.
All right, um, on the mayor's report, I've got a. Whereas February first to the twenty eighth, twenty twenty-one has been designated Career and Technical Education Month by the Association for Career and Technical Education. And whereas career and technical education provides students with the opportunity to gain the academic, technical, and ability skills necessary for true career readiness. And whereas students in career and technical education programs participate in meaningful experiences that improve the quality of their education and increase student engagement and achievement. And whereas career and technical education provides students with career exploration opportunities earlier in their educational experience, which enables them to make informed and beneficial decisions about their academic coursework, as well as pursue of established programs of study and career pathways. And whereas leaders from business and industry nationwide report increasing challenges related to the skills gap and connecting qualified professionals with available careers in critical and growing CTE-related fields, including healthcare, energy, advanced manufacturing, and information technology. And whereas career and technical education prepares students for these and other fulfilling careers by offering integrated programs of study that link secondary and post-secondary education and lead to the attainment of industry organized credentials. And whereas ensuring that employers have access to qualified workforce is a critical step in ensuring productivity among the business and industry communities, as well as continued American economic growth and global competitiveness. Now therefore, I, Ronald Jones, Mayor of Hicksville, do hereby proclaim February first to the twenty eighth, twenty twenty-one as Career and Technical Education Month. Um, got an email last week about the demolition program. The, uh, the commissioners are going to start that up again this year. That was canceled, if you remember. And so if anybody in town want their property tore down, um, get ahold of Mike Bailey. He'll help you through that, or you can contact me. I know last year we had three properties. One was torn down, so those people have to, um, apply again. And I'm meeting with the commissioners this Thursday, but that has to be in by March the twentieth, twenty twenty-one. Um, got a thank you letter from.
Ron, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
I, I read that big article that commissioners had in the paper. Uh, I don't think it would be fitting for anybody except you to go see Coley.
I'd like to talk to him.
You're a good man.
Cause that's one I really wanna see happen.
Yep.
So I'll make sure it gets in.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And then I got a letter from the CIC saying your contribution helps ensure that jobs and investments are created in DeFines County. So it's just a thank you note for, for the council's support. Um, the COVID nineteen, um, I see the Community Memorial Hospital is on the list now to get vaccinations, so that's a plus from two weeks ago. Um, right now, phase one B is, February first is gonna be teachers and staff, K through twelve, and also seventy and older. Um, February the eighth is sixty-five and older. So that's just kind of a, um, what's going on with that, so. Uh, reminder, that we had that snow. It's been a while since we've had that much snow to people, the emergency snow route. Anytime there's over two inches of snow, you gotta move your cars. And there are signs out there saying this is an emergency. I know South Main, North Main, High Street. So, um, just remember, the, the police went out Sunday night and contacted the people that were parked that made it much easier for Kent. Um, the next meeting will be the sixteenth, cause that is a holiday on the fifteenth, President's Day, so it'll be on Tuesday, the sixteenth. Any questions for me? Gee, everybody's quiet.
I'm making a call into a jury.
Roll call? You gotta get your. Cheryl, you gotta get. Dawn, you gotta get your mic on.
Go on.
Yeah, I had to get my mouse.
Yeah.
Who seconded that?
Larry, if you wanna guess.
Bassett and Ridgeway gotta be in there somehow.
Beverley?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Certainly.
Pepper?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, everybody had a great discussion tonight. Thanks for your input. Meeting adjourned.